Okay, well, morning, everyone. So, welcome to the first Housing Committee of this municipal year, 2024/25. I'm Douglas Johnson, as Chair of the Committee, and I'll ask everyone to introduce themselves for the record, for the cameras. We don't have anyone actually in the public gallery in person today, but this is going out live on the webcast and will be available to look at afterwards. And it may go out on Sheffield Live TV, I don't know whether that's still a thing or not. So, just some basic housekeeping, phones, could you all turn your phones off or to silent? Toilets are outside the usual place, there's no fire test planned, if there's a fire, get out by following someone. I think that's, that's all. I'm just going to give a reminder that if you hadn't noticed, there's a general election on the 4th of July, so we're in PERP. I know you look surprised there, Gail, but apparently it is happening. We're in the period of restrictions on pre-election publicity, so we just have to be a little bit mindful that we're not, we're required not to use council meetings and facilities for electioneering, basically. So, yeah, the council have got a duty not to publish material that can, you know, influence for or against any candidate. I think everyone here knows the rules and I know you have been briefed, so that's all I need to say on it. So, we've got some new faces, so I will just go around the room, I will start over this side with councillor Turpin.
Paul Turpin, Green councillor for Gleamless Valley.
Councillor Penny Baker, Liberal Democrats, Stannington, and Vice Chair of Housing.
Councillor Gail Smith, Member for the Liberal Democrats in Mossborough.
Councillor Alan Woodcock, Member for the Liberal Democrats, East Ecclesdale Ward.
Thanks, Alan, and if you'll move to your side.
Councillor Karen McGowan, subbing for councillor Drasik, and councillor Ferberley. Thank you.
Good morning, Mike Chaplin, Labour councillor for Southey Ward.
Morning, Alison Norris, Labour councillor for Woodhouse and Labour spokesperson for housing.
Thanks very much, that's got to all the councillors. Now, we've, we've got apologies, as I was going to do, from councillor Mia Drasic, so those can be formally noted. Haven't seen Mark Jones, so we're expecting that he will appear, otherwise that's the whole committee complete. So, I'll just ask the officers who are sitting at the desks to introduce themselves now, and then the other officers, as usual, maybe you can introduce yourselves when you come up for the particular item that you're here for. So, can I start on this side?
Hello, my name's Amanda Clayton, I'm a Democratic Services Officer and clerk to this committee.
Alan Harris, Vice Director of Housework.
Thank you, Alan.
Sorry. Morning, Sherry Grant, I'm Assistant, Assistant Director of the Legal Services.
Thanks very much, and welcome to day two of your role at the council. Anyone else here, oh, Chris.
Morning, I'm Chris Edison, I am the interim Director of Housing.
Morning all, I'm Tom Smith, I'm Director of Operational Services, responsible for the Housing Repair Service.
Right, thanks very much, that's everyone at the tables so far. So, we're here, we've done apologies, we've got apologies from councillor Drasic. Item two is exclusion of present public, so this is just to notify, sort of the advice that there is a closed appendix on item 11, which relates to collection of water rates. So, just to notify people. So, what we expect to do then is that it may well be that we don't need to discuss anything in the closed part of that report. If we do, then we'll need to close the meeting, which in practice means turning off the webcast, because it's something that shouldn't go out to the public there. I suggest we deal with that when we come to item 11, if it's needed. So, that's item two. Item three is declarations of interest. So, do I have any declarations of interest? Don't see any, wasn't expecting any, that's great, thank you. Number four is the minutes of the previous meeting. So, we've got, at page 11 of your PACs, you will find the minutes of the last meeting of the last municipal year in March. And then, secondly, there's a very short meeting which was done at the AGM of the council, that's on page 23, which just records the establishment of the Urgency Subcommittee and point to that, yeah. So, that's where we are. Do you have any questions to that, or can we take those as agreed? Any dissent, everyone happy with the minutes? Right, okay. I think we can recall that as unanimous, accepting those of both sets of minutes there. And Amanda, remind me, I need to sign those, sign the paper copy formally, so I will do that. Okay. Number five is the work programme, so again, starting at page 25 of the, of the PAC here. I'll ask Amanda to introduce this briefly, I think it's fair to say that it is what it is at this point, and then at the next meeting in September, we'll probably come back and have a bit more discussion about future things we want on there. That's just my little skill on it. Going to bring Amanda in. Did you want to ask something about the work programme? Shall I just ask Amanda to introduce anything that's new on it, and then I'll come over to you? Okay, to you, Amanda.
Thank you, Chair, I don't have anything lengthy by way of introduction, this is the first meeting of this municipal year, so the work programme is set out as is for now, and as we get further into it, I'm sure this will develop, and I will bring to your attention anything new that comes up at subsequent meetings, but happy to answer questions.
Right, thanks very much. Councillor Norris.
Thank you, it's only a little thing, Amanda. On page 29, you've got items we've agreed to add but haven't got a date yet, and the implementation plan for the path to net zero. I was wondering, could that go to the October meeting, because that's when we're due to have that in, and could we have our, the briefing and discussion sessions that we agreed before sorted in the run-up to that?
Yeah, I think the intention is that we're going to have some workshops that were discussed at the programming session, weren't they? So, yeah, I'm not, I can't commit to the October date perhaps, I don't know if anyone else here wants to lead on that, but we'll certainly get back to you as soon as we can.
So, what I can say is that I think as the committee, we all agree we'd have these workshops available for all members to attend about the whole approach to net zero, and the executive director has been setting out, trying to organise a set of dates, I think they're not finalised yet, but I did chase him up and he's working on getting whoever's needed to coordinate those, because we do need those in our diary. And shall we say, hopefully with a view to bring this back in October? They'll be fine, certainly fine by me. Councillor Turpin.
Thanks. There's a couple of things that we did discuss last year that are really pressingly urgent. I think firstly is the pressures to deal with homelessness, a rising multi-million pound cost every year. And we discussed options on, on purchasing hotels, and where at least the money that we then spend providing temporary accommodation for people struggling with homelessness goes back into the council rather than is out the window to another business, and I think we're forecast to spend like over eight million pound this year. So, could we bring that forward to discuss the real implications in that and the absolute urgency of doing something radical very quickly to deal with it? And the second thing that I would like to be on the work plan is an actual roadmap for building and refurbishing homes for the council stock, because we've been talking about this for years and it's just gone nowhere, and it's absolutely ridiculous, that in five years I've been a councillor, this has been talked about, and every year, the, the target for new homes reduces because it's not been delivered, and it's, and it's just absolutely pathetic and ridiculous. So, can we get something on there where we can have an actual written down timeline of when we're going to do this work, and can it be done again with some urgency? Thanks.
Good, okay, thanks. I think two good points that are no surprise to anyone who was on the committee last year. I think to be fair, the issue about temporary accommodation is, because it's something we discussed already and asked it to come back on the agenda, and I think it's pencilled in for October. Just looking at, Chris, as a Director of Housing or as Head of Housing Investment, do you want to say anything about whether the approach to stock increase and investment in terms of programming it in for this committee? It certainly is going to be on here.
Yes, Chair, we can put it in, I think, we'll juggle those priorities, and certainly we can have something on houses for October, because quite a lot of activity in that area now.
Thanks, I think it'd be helpful. Councillor Smith, yes.
Yeah, just a comment, Chair, I totally agree with councillor Turpin. Sooner the better, because, you know, September, October might be winter before we've made any decisions that make a difference, so it is urgent and it should be as soon as possible. Thank you.
Right, thanks, I think that's helpful, and if Amanda got note of that, not seeing anyone disagreeing with that, obviously homelessness is absolutely critical, and then the major investment programmes, also one of the big issues that's been of interest to this committee, so we do want to see some progress on that. So, if we come back to those, I think with that, we can approve the work programme as is here, sorry, yeah, something else?
Yeah, I just want to say that talking about October, you know, that is still four months off, and eight point something million pound a year for homelessness, like that'll be another two, three million pound we'd have spent by the time we come to discuss it, and actually, we could have probably bought a building by then that would provide 60 families with somewhere to stay.
Yeah, I think that's a fair point. I don't necessarily help, the only option we've got really is to bring it forward to the September meeting, which isn't a great deal of time in advance, but also, of course, we have agreed at this committee last time, an outline plan of action, with those four key areas to develop to make a series in road and flats, which is work that officers will be doing. Quite right, because it's a priority area. What we could do with, I guess, is some briefings on exactly what's happening in those areas that we can do, but obviously don't take place in the committee. Does that seem okay? I'll just bring in Tom Smith, as you've indicated that.
Thank you, Chair, I wonder whether it's worth through the knowledge briefings, just, so I agree, you know, September feels like a long way away, doesn't it? And October will be into budget setting process for the council at that point, I suspect. I think some of what you're suggesting, councillor Turpin, in terms of potentially buying property, will be predicated on the capital programme and predicated on our decision, some decision making and some formal governance around that. So, if it's helpful, I think what would be really good between now and September is for us to have some of the discussions through the knowledge briefings in terms of the art of the possible almost, and to really then hopefully clearly set out when we do get into October, what the, what the process is to get to a decision around some of these options. I'm very conscious that, you know, if we do decide that an option is to do something like, as I say, buying infrastructure and things, that will potentially need a decision through another committee, actually, potentially through even Strategy and Resources, so I think it would be really good for us to, so councillors are really clear what the timeline actually will be to make those decisions, so that we're not setting expectation that we can't actually deliver for our own governance processes, if that's okay. So, maybe we can bring some through knowledge briefings, if that's okay.
Thanks, Tom, and yeah, I do get that. The, the point really that we have to deal with, and I know that you're highlighting the potential obstacles, but you know, the, the, we will be spending that money anyway, and that money will be gone forever. If we spend that money on our own property sooner, you know, it makes absolutely perfect business sense that spending three million pound on a hotel will pay for itself within a couple of years probably, you know, it's, and so just the longer we delay that, the more money goes and the more difficult it gets to invest that money in capital. So, you know, we are spending it anyway, whether we spend it on something that's an asset, or whether we give it to someone else.
Yeah, that's part of what's being looked into, isn't it? So, yeah, it's good. Just bring in councillor Baker and then.
I think it's obvious, Chair, from this conversation, that the committee are feeling quite frustrated because of the length of time it takes us to do things within the council. No one individual's fault, or one group's fault, it's just the change into committee systems, we haven't managed to fight our way through to getting anything done quickly yet, it's something that we've all got to work on. And hopefully, by the time we meet again as a committee, we'll have some news about what national monies might be available, and being careful, what I said, which might have an input in the decisions we'll make in the long run.
Yeah, for it goes councillor Norris, I think it's worth just reflecting on the fact that I think we'd all expressed some frustration about how long it took to get to the bottom of why on earth we were spending so many millions extra on temporary accommodation that's suddenly appeared out of nowhere, and actually getting the bottom of the financial reasoning behind that. Eventually got there, but yeah, we do need to see some action, don't we? Councillor Norris.
Just to echo what you said councillor Johnson about, we had, at the, at the March meeting, we had our four, four actions that the officers were going to go and away and work on, that this is recognised as a key issue, that it's a national issue, not just for Sheffield. You know, when we get paid eighty pounds a week by the government for housing somebody in a, in an accommodation that costs five hundred pounds, that is obviously going to be a shortfall. So, yeah, I welcome what you're saying, but I think there is work already in training it, getting an update on where we've got to with it, in a knowledge briefing would be excellent. The other thing I'd like to say about knowledge briefings is we had a, we had an induction about the housing growth strategy, which is coming through to Strategy and Resources, only because all of us for one reason or another had missed the briefing to group, but I would, to Labour Group, but I would suggest that that would be a good knowledge briefing too. And we do have some really clear targets coming through with timelines, including 900 affordable homes a year. Not necessarily all direct build, but acquiring. Yeah.
Thanks. I think these reflect definite priorities for the committee, don't they? So, I think we've got those on the work plan. If you need to refer to it, what we agreed on the temporary accommodation situation is at pages 14 and 15 of the PAC, because it's in the minutes from last time, just a pointer there about some of the, the actions that are hauled away now. Okay, I think we've, we've got that. With that, can we formally approve the work programme as set out in the appendix? And I think we'll, I think we will be coming back to the substance of these over the next few months. Sorry, councillor Norris.
Just one little clarification, we couldn't take the handover petition about increasing the levy this meeting because of PERP. Is that definitely coming to September?
Yeah, presumably. I probably should have said at the beginning, so we're not having public questions or petitions or members' questions on this agenda because of PERP, I guess that's quite right, so they can all roll over to the next meeting, even though that is in September, and it does seem like a long way off. But in the meantime, I think we're able to pick up that issue informally and see if we can get ahead of the game.
Yeah, we were going to have a briefing about it, weren't we, because there's, there's a cluster of issues around it. Yeah, thank you.
So, just in case that wasn't clear to anyone, there was a petition put forward which is in connection with the increase in the tenants' levy. So, that is, yeah, it's quite obviously something that hasn't been done by the council for some time, it's something we ought to look at, and without saying one way or the other as to where that decision's going to go, just so that we're clear about what we're discussing here. Okay, I think I take it that we've got the work plan approved as set out in appendix one, so Amanda, if you can have a note of that. I think we can move on now to the formal decision, so move on to item six. And Jane, I think, ask you to come up and present the final budget downturn for the last financial year, so this is in our role of monitoring the revenue budgets here. Jane, I'll just hand over to you if you're ready.
Thank you, Chair. I'm Jane Billby, Assistant Director of Finance and Accounting, and I'm here to give you the final downturn position for 2023/24. So, this paper that you've got is a shortened version of the paper that went to the Finance Committee yesterday. It's also worth noting that the final positions included in the annual statement of accounts, which was published on the 31st of May, in line with statutory deadlines, and we are proud to be in the 41% of councils that actually achieved this this year. So, in terms of the paper, I'll just run you through the headlines of where we got to last year. The council overspent against budget by 15.6 million in 2023/24 against a net revenue budget of 497 million, which was a 3.1% variance. In quarter one, we indicated a forecast downturn of 17.6 million, so it did improve by 2 million throughout the year. The relative stability in the forecast did show good commitment of council officers across the board to financial management and a realistic estimate of service costs. The improvement was largely due to corporate underspends through sustained improvement in interest income from treasury investments, which did provide a mitigation of 6 million overall throughout increasing unfunded overspends. The challenging budget underlying issues remain for the council, as I've talked about throughout the year, in children's services, SEN transport, adults' care and wellbeing and homelessness. Adults overspent by 2.7 million, and they continue to be challenged through high-cost packages and an underlying issue in learning disabilities purchasing budgets of 10 and a half million, which we did manage to offset through some one-off funding last year. Children's services overspent by 12.7 million, they've been faced with increasing costs of external residential placements and persistent demand for SEN, home-to-school transport. The homelessness situation is a first affecting housing general fund budgets, we're using hotel and bed and breakfast accommodation to support our homelessness duties, whereas shortage of affordable housing in the city has pushed families and single people to crisis point. Government legislation around housing benefit means that the council is subsidising the cost of the provision without any available funding or available budget, which has led to an overspend of 8.4 million between temporary and supported accommodation, which is all affecting the, the general fund. It's probably worth mentioning some of the actions that have been happening in this area since I last presented the downturn. The housing team have been, have completed a soft market test which returned a response from 12 providers, the team are looking at how this can help in the short term, and it may result in a number of units to increase TA capacity. A second soft market test ended last week to use some grant funding to commission an options and advisory service that's outside of the council to help manage demand at the front door. A third soft market test will look at private sector leasing, following the lead of Core City's colleagues, particularly in Manchester, who have looked at some more different creative commissioning approaches, which actually close a loophole in some of the legislation. There's also the work with the Royal Foundation, which created good engagement with the private sector landlords, where another 30 units were brought forward to help as a result. And also the prevention team, they've been recruiting to take the focus away from the front door crisis management cases, to try and look more at prevention activities and cases at a risk of escalation. So, the interventions can make an impact to the financial position but do take time. Most of the issues are around lack of capacity and bringing forward that is not a quick task. Early forecasts indicate for 24/25 that the spend is continuing along the same lines and it's not reduced, and given that we are losing almost 75% of the spend for every hotel booking that we make, we are continuing with a significant overspend into 24/25. So, you councils have mentioned the need for urgent action, finance colleagues are meeting with Chris and housing colleagues next week to look at some short-term solutions that can impact the budget this year, and I think that's right, to be brought to committee briefings in due course. So, for the HRA, that was 5.2 million overspent, and the biggest issue that we face in the HRA relates to the persistent overspends in housing repairs and maintenance budgets. The overspend in housing repairs and maintenance is 7.7 million against a 47 million budget, which is 16% variance, which is largely due to increases in equipment, materials and subcontractor costs, as we've talked about throughout the year. There's a chart on, in the report that shows the split between the HRA budgets in comparison to 22/23. The repairs and maintenance budget was uplifted by 7.8 million, and spend is almost 5 million higher than the previous year. Overall, the council did put in place 40 million, 47 million pounds worth of budget savings plans to balance the budget for 23/24, and we achieved 78% of that. Six and a half were deemed undeliverable and will present a risk to budgets going into 24/25 alongside underlying budget challenges of 26.7 million, which is noted in one of the tables in the paper. We did use a lot of one-off grant income and offsets from provisions in year that mitigated some of the core issues that still need to be addressed, and those are in our three overspending areas of adults, children's and homelessness. Next year, the budget savings commitment is about 8 million for service improvements out of a 42 million total, so while the savings target is lower, it becomes more and more difficult each year as we've got, you know, compounded savings to deliver. The issues in Sheffield are not unique, and we're seeing them across the country, where different councils are facing similar challenges, financial context of uncertainty over future funding streams. We were managed to, able to manage our overspend position by drawing from our reserves from the past three years. We made available 70 million of those reserves that were set aside in 2021, and as we go into 24/25, we'll have 27.6 of those remaining to manage any overspends. We're currently in the process of refreshing our medium-term financial analysis and begin to the process of setting a balanced budget for 25/26. Pressures on services from increased demand, inflating cost bases and reductions in funding on top of those undelivered savings will make the process even more difficult this year. So, the, the paper is just to note the financial position, and I think really to draw out the fact that we have got some significant issues to deal with after we move into next year. Happy to take any questions, and of course, housing colleagues are here to support with that.
Thanks very much, that's really comprehensive and concise, but covers a lot of information in there. As you said, it's largely a report for noting, so it's the baseline of the financial position that we're going into as we're going into this year. So, not trying to shut down any questions, but it's, it is reporting there. But yeah, any questions apart from councillor Chaplin, who goes first?
Thank, thank you, Chair, and thank you, Jane, for the, for the report. Looking at the responsive repairs and maintenance costs that continue to be over budget, identified in 1.8.8, and the disrepair cases, they're still high, and we can see that in 1.8.10. We'd have to say that we, you know, we welcome the fact that these, these items are coming up on the committee's agenda today, to commission additional contractors to help speed up the repairs and address the damp and mould. Can we also confirm that both the additional in-house repairs teams that have been budgeted for in the last municipal year, that they are now recruited and working to help clear the backlog? Might be one for Tom rather than Jane.
I think it's a question for Tom, yeah.
Yeah, I can confirm, so we, you'll remember, we put additional budget in for another two disrepair teams to support repairs on disrepair and try to reduce the level of claims that come through service, and both of those are now in place. And there's a paper obviously later today to further supplement that, to really bear down on that from a resourcing perspective as well.
Yeah, thanks, I mean, as, as Tom's pointed out, we have got a whole paper on that, and it's a really relevant issue.
Chair, can I just add on another point? The committees being asked to ensure a sustained improvement in revenue budgets in this municipal year. Last year, we established a specialist voids team to help ensure that voids were available for rent again more quickly, because obviously the, the sooner they're back in, back in use, the sooner we can collect rents on them. And the total number of voids were reduced. Do we have any actual data, though, to show that if our performance is improving in this area, or will that be coming to committee at a later date?
Same thing, so we, it will obviously be part and parcel of, you know, the full part in terms of performance monitoring through the committee, and we'll bring that forward in due course, but I think what I can say is that bringing together the resources into one place has certainly seen an improvement in terms of the data. I've not got the exact figures in front of me, but I know the turnaround times have produced fairly substantially. The one thing I do know in repairs, for example, the repair service, I think we were running at something around about 80, 80 days just for the repair bit, 18 months or so ago, we're now down below 20 days within the repair service bit. So, that bring, and that isn't about necessarily the repair, just the repair service getting better, it's about genuine of the joint working across to housing, so it is bearing some fruit, and maybe we can bring something forward in terms of the performance report as part of the work programme, just to make sure we address that.
Thank you, thank you, Tom.
Thanks, yeah, for that. I think it's a good point to make about the voids, and I wonder if, Tom, looking at you here, if, if we could, as well as the performance monitoring that comes to this committee in the public session, if we could maybe get a briefing on just how well if we could maybe get a briefing on just how well the vacancies team has worked. I mean, it's a good initiative, as councillor Chaplin said, to set that up and he's saying it's made a difference. It'd be quite good to see the ways in which it has made a difference and how much further it will go. Right, okay. Councillor Baker.
Just a quick question on voids. We realised not long ago that houses that were on the disposal list were classed as voids. Is this still happening?
So it is but, so here's the but. So it's difficult, isn't it? So we can define our performance in lots of different ways, you know, the old lies, damn lies and statistics. Things apply a little bit here. What we've been doing historically in Sheffield is that we've been actually very inclusive of everything within our voids performance figures in a way frankly that some other local authorities have not been. We haven't been necessarily consistent in terms of how we've been reporting the data. So it's important that we track the ones that are on the disposal list because it's still important that they are disposed of in a timely manner, councillor Baker. So I think what we've got is a combination now of, yes, they are still in some of our overall tracking and monitoring because we want to make sure they're actually disposed of in a timely way. But in terms of our performance now, we are excluding those from the actual performance figures because that's kind of the right thing to do from a performance perspective. So we're kind of doing both because we want to make sure we're doing both because it's still important to keep the foot down on the disposals process and make sure that's been done in a timely manner as well.
Thanks, Chair. That's very good news. I mean, there was one property on there that's now been purchased that we've never, we were never going to be able to do anything with it ever. But it had been on the disposal list to my knowledge for 15 years. And I think Anclast is a void. Thank you for that.
Well, I've got a bit of progress on that. You know, if only to just deal with one property every 15 years, that's better than another. Okay, good. So just on this report, yeah, it's a lot better. It is, you know, serious progress has been made from inside. I think on this report, we just asked to note the information in the report that Jane's presented. So we'll have to do that. Not seeing disagreement there. So take that as unanimously noted and we'll move on to the capital programme, which is item seven. So Dean, welcome to the table. Do you want to come and introduce yourself for the record and then take us through the capital programme paper? And I should say that I'm kind of making the assumption that people would have read the papers. So, you know, a summary of what's in there is just what's needed. Over to you, I think, Dean. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. Good morning, everybody. I'm Dean Muttuth. I'm the Housing Head of Housing Investment and Maintenance. The information is for, the report is for information and there's two recommendations in there just to note the capital programme outturn for the 2324 financial year, but also to provide an update on the next five-year capital programme, which is the 2324 to 2728 programme. Just for information, in the report for new members, the report has tracked across the 2324 financial year, the variances within the capital programme and the requirements to reduce expenditure. The two major elements for reducing expenditure during the year was the roofing programme with our roofing contractor going into administration. That contract has been moved forward into this current financial year and will be started to be delivered within the next couple of months to give you that reassurance. The other one was the external wall insulation programme to our area properties, that we've had some challenges with the contractor in relation to delivering that contract on time and on scale. Again, the work and the due diligence with that contractor has taken place and the progress has been made again within this financial year. So you will see within the quarter one financial capital report for the 2425 financial year, the progress that we've been making on those two particular projects. What you will note on page 61 of the report is the five-year capital programme that sits within there. And one of the things just to bring to your attention is particularly around the HRA programme around how we upgrade and update our existing stock in our properties. The outturn for this current year or for the 2324 year was 41 million. What you will see over the next four years within that programme is a significant ramping up of the investment that is within the capital programme, to the extent that in 2728, it's forecasted that we'll be spending over £100 million on investing in our stock. You will see across some of those lines that they are, some of the, some of the lines that we've had previous conversations around. So heating, energy and carbon reduction and also the external enveloping of properties, particularly around the cost of living crisis and making sure our properties meet the current regulatory standards. The consultation for, for those of us who went through the pain of the initial decent homes programme, which started over 15 years ago, the consultation for decent homes too is likely to come out later this year. So that may have some implications as far as in relation to some of the challenges that we face within the capital programme. But I'll be presenting later within the committee, the ask for the 4.5 million for the stock condition surveys and the stock option appraisal work that will be undertaken. That will also influence some of the figures that sit within the next five-year capital programme because the work that is needed there will give us a better indication of where our stock investment priorities need to sit. And we'll be coming to committee on a routine basis in relation to that, what that means for us for future investment decisions. But Chair, I'm happy to take any questions on the report.
Great, thank you, Dean. Again, nice and concise there. Over to councillor McGowan.
Thank you. I just want to raise, oops, sorry, got my question wrong. We welcome the work on the building of the 180 units on Bowlhill's Newstead and the Opal sites as part of the stock increase programme. And the Newstead's in my ward, so I know quite a bit about it. We're pleased that the pipeline projects outlined in 2.5, including the Edward Street Flats refurbishments and pest control and waste management improvements are likely to start this year. What I want to know, because since I've been on in 20, yeah, for 14 years now, the Newstead site has been vacant all that time. And I just wondered when the work is going to start on all of these. Can you give us a start date for work?
Unfortunately, councillor McGowan, I probably can't give you a start date tonight because that's not my area of expertise. But I think what we'll do is go away and provide you with those in between the meetings. So you've got some very clear clarity in relation to that particular project.
Thanks. We have got things in ground, but it's like been like 18 months now and still no houses have been built. But we've got fencing round. So yeah, we just need to get on with that work. Thank you. Sorry, can I just come back with one more? I'm just a little bit concerned with what you were saying about the contracts and the roofing etc. And knowing how big those contracts are and the procurement that they have to go through and everything, it is worrying that we've got, after going through all of that, we've got contractors that are letting us down, shall we say, or struggling at that time. And it's just knowing what process they have to go through that we're ending up in that situation. It's just a bit of a concern, that's all.
Noughton councillor McGowan, on that particular issue, and it's taken us approximately nine months to go back out to procurement to find a new contractor. Again, as part of what we've been doing with our due diligence on procurement, we've been making sure that the new contractor that we have awarded this work to has got the resources, the capacity and let's say, the future capacity to deliver the programme on behalf of Sheffield City Council.
Yeah, thanks. I guess councillor McGowan, the reminder is just it's always useful to keep all councils up to date on developments as they go along. It's the sort of inquiry that all councillors get all the time, isn't it? Okay, yes. Councillor Norris.
Yes, similarly, Dean, with the update on Newstead, the pipeline projects, Edward Street Flats, all of those ones. Just it would be really useful to know when they're going to start, when we know that.
I'll be able to provide that detail, just in relation to Edward Street. The target is to start on site. I'll be having regular meetings with the tenants association and the council leader due to start somewhere between January and March 2025.
Thanks, yeah. Can I just ask a couple of questions? So there's some sections of bullet points. So on page 64, there's some bullet points under 2.2, which is breakdown of some of the major areas of spending then of the re-profile budget allocations. And then on the following page on 55, there's a similar set of the key areas under five bullet points there. I just wonder if we could be provided with the rough costs or values attached to each of those bullet points so we get some kind of sense as a committee as to where the money's going, which are the priorities there. Don't expect you to give me those figures right now, but I wonder if they could be circulated afterwards, if that would be possible.
Yeah, just in response to that, Chair, some of these projects have got indicative costs associated to that, but we're still doing the surveying work in terms of the specification of the word that is required to that. So until we go out to the soft market test and go out to the procurement, we won't fully understand what the full costs of those are. But we can, we can let committee know what the indicative costs are that we've built within our business planning.
I think that'd be helpful. I mean, I assume the reason they were not in is because they will be indicative estimates. But I think for committee members, it'd be helpful to have those figures. And we just have to understand the caveats that those figures could well change and undoubtedly will based on almost everyone else's experience of everything in the world. The other sort of presentation issue I wanted, we agreed last year we'd actually separate out the lines, the budget lines of heating, energy and carbon reduction, to separate out the carbon reduction element from the heating and energy. And that was put into the layout of the housing revenue when it was presented in February. I'm just wondering if we could have those broken down too. The reason for that is so we can actually see how much is actually going into the carbon reduction and net zero as opposed to things like boiler replacements, which obviously do need to continue at the moment. But, you know, we want to see where that balance is. So I wonder if you could, specifically, I wonder on the tables it presented, whether that budget line is in, whether we could have a refresh of those tables circulated to members afterwards.
Yes, Chair, we'll have a look at that. One of the challenges that we've got there, so when we talk about heating and energy, part of the heating and energy is looking at the new technologies, so air source heat pumps that within there that will contribute towards the carbon reduction, but are also part of the heating programme as well. So we'll have a look at how we can present that in the best way possible.
If you would, that's great because I think it was a useful step forward when it was presented in the HRA business plan there. Okay, was, who's that? Councillor Turpin, did you want to come in? Okay. All right, okay. There's time for both of you.
Yeah, I want to ask some questions about on page 66. Can we add, because I'm new to this committee, you probably all have the answer, but I don't. Is the neighbourhood maintenance, the approach to neighbourhood management?
Sorry, Gail, you're so far ahead of us that you're on the next report. Can I get your whole fire? I'll just go back to councillor Turpin. And I'll note you've got a question on the next report. Excellent.
Thanks. So I've got a couple of things I'd like to ask about. So I'll just, first off is, how come we've got a 5 million underspend in the SIP and a nearly 15 million underspend in the housing capital programme when our residents are crying out and being hugely angry and disillusioned with the council and us as councillors and council officers are getting it in the neck every week that we're, there's almost 20 million pound in the budget that hasn't been spent? Page four of the report on the SIP and I haven't made a note of the page, we're just following it on the housing capital programme. The, I always find it really counterintuitive, the way the council does its accounting, where a negative is actually a positive. But yeah, that's what it says in the document.
Yes, okay. Dean.
Thank you, Chair. As I say, in relation to the underspend on the housing improvement programme, that does relate in the majority to the two contracts that we've had in relation to the roofing replacement and the external wall insulation replacement. So that work has been passported through to this current financial year, so will be undertaken. But as I say, the stock increase programme, whilst not my area of expertise, my understanding is that the capital strategy for the stock increase programme was presented to Strategy and Resources in February and approved at full committee in March of this particular year. And I think that's what we'll be coming back to committee for in relation to what is going to get done and what's the indicative timeline for the new property development within the schemes. So we can provide further information on that and further, councillor Turpin.
And the other thing, I want to be a little bit selfish and talk about my ward, the GV master plan. And councillor McGowan said, wait in 18 months. So we've got a planned Opal building in our ward and we were waiting for 18 months about two years ago. In fact, the contract was tendered and awarded to Kia two years ago to build it. And the planning permission's probably expired now. I don't know if there's different rules around the council having its own planning department and all that. But we've been waiting a long time for the things in Gleedless Valley to be done. And like I said, that building, as far as we're concerned, was good to go two years ago and there's still nothing happened and nothing looking like happening. We were also told last year that the, you have to remind me, 40-odd million pound that was pledged from the stock increase programme had been removed and that in fact, this committee removed it, which was, well, I mean, it must have happened, I must have dozed off because it certainly didn't go past my eyes. And the one line in the budget report that referred to it just referred to, I think, a reduction in the stock increase programme. It didn't specify Gleedless Valley whatsoever. We've had no report through this committee, but there's been no report, as far as I'm aware, in front of any councillor to say that that 40-odd million pound has been removed from the Gleedless Valley master plan. Yet it has been put into reports and it has been put into public reports and the public have been told it's been removed. Now, as far as I'm concerned, that's a decision that either hasn't been made or has been made illegally or, and it really feels like there's conversations going on in the corridors between senior officers without the inclusion of members. And yeah, it's very, very annoying and it's very, very upsetting for our residents in Gleedless who have been waiting for something from this master plan since 2017, when it began. So yeah, can you please explain what is going on with that funding?
That's just, yeah, first of all, and I think, Dean, you got some insight because you know, you were looking into this issue about how this accounted for. I think it is fair to say, just, you know, there hasn't been a decision through this committee to alter the stock increase programme. But Dean, you're probably in a better position to explain, aren't you?
I'm still undertaking conversations within my council colleagues' chair in relation to the decision-making process within the SIP and which committee it went to, what particular time and which officer was responsible for taking those. That was the commitment that I gave at the last Gleedless Valley board meeting and as soon as I have that information, I will share it.
Thanks. I think it would probably, yeah, helpful if we can get that and just so we've got a clearer explanation of what's actually been decided and why. Okay, all right. Any further questions on the capital programme or are we okay to move to this? I think we're, again, we're being asked to note it. The recommendation is on page, what page is it on? 52, is it? Let me just find that. Yes, okay. So 51, 52. Essentially, it's noting the housing capital programme outturn and budget position and the update provided. So as has been reported to us. Everyone happy to note that? Okay. Yep, thank you very much. Right, so we can record that as noted unanimously. And then we'll move on to what we've all been waiting for, Gail, neighbourhood management policy. So I think we get to swap deans, don't we? So yeah, go on, Dean, again, introduce yourself and then take us through the report. Obviously, I appreciate that the report here is a pretty long document, so please don't read it all through. I assume we have read it and we have discussed this informally. But yeah, some highlights will be very useful and just to show us what the direction is. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks, Chair. My name's Dean Fear and I'm Head of Neighbourhood Services. And I'm here today to talk about the proposed neighbourhood management policy. So very briefly, the Housing and Neighbourhood Service proposes the adoption of a neighbourhood management policy. We've not had one before. What it does, it outlines the existing service standards that we deliver. It's important to note that these standards are not enhancements, but it brings together current arrangements and it's a reflection of our ongoing commitment to service quality. current arrangements and it's a reflection of our ongoing commitment to service quality. So the policies are proactive response to the new consumer standards set out by the regulator of social housing. Our current position is that Housing and Neighbourhood Service lacks a formal policy that aligns with the upcoming regulatory, regulatory changes and meets the neighbourhood and community standard. To address this, we've engaged with Housing Quality Network, I'll refer to them as HQN. They're a leading consultancy known for their expertise in the housing sector to conduct a comprehensive self-assessment alongside us. So the required outcomes of the new neighbourhood and community standard is follows. Safety of shared spaces, local cooperation, making sure that we're working with partners and the local communities, our response to antisocial behaviour and hate incidents. So the policy will serve as a framework integrating related strategies, standards, policies and procedures relating to neighbourhood management. The policy brings together a number of other documents into a single place, which clearly sets out to our customers how we manage our neighbourhoods, service standards that we are expected to meet and how we, and how to make a service request. The development of the neighbourhood management policy is not solely a legal requirement, but it's a choice by the Housing and Neighbourhood Service to ensure compliance with new regulations and to proactively manage our neighbourhoods effectively. The policy provides clarity on roles and responsibilities, enabling council tenants to hold the Housing and Neighbourhood Service accountable. So I'm just going to go through very briefly the type of activities that are covered in our neighbourhood management policy. Collaboration, working with tenants and key stakeholders. One of the ways we'll do this is through our neighbourhood walkabouts, giving tenants an opportunity to discuss local issues and for us to come up with a, an agreed improvement plan. The neighbourhood management policy covers how we will manage our green spaces such as grassed areas, shrubs, hedges, trees, and also sets out to tenants the standards of garden upkeep that we expect as per the tenancy conditions. It goes on to talk about how we manage waste, our response to fly tipping, how we will work with environmental protection services around dog fouling, but also our commitment to waste management and it states how we will work in partnership with both the Waste Management Service team and Veolia to reduce waste, increase recycling, decrease landfill waste. It also sets out the expectations on council tenants, how to dispose of waste correctly, where shared waste facilities exist. We have twenty-four playgrounds located on housing land that we're responsible for. We provide an emergency response and the policy sets out, we will provide an immediate action on hazardous communal issues such as drug paraphernalia, combustibles and spillages. It sets out our service standards for removing graffiti, what we will do in regards to internal communal area maintenance. It details our scheduled health and, health and safety inspections, but also how we clean blocks on a, on a programme basis as well and what you can expect from that cleanliness. And it also talks about pests and infestations and what our approach is to dealing with issues and working with environmental services around those. Policy goes on to talk about vehicle management, advises how we will investigate issues with abandoned, untaxed and improperly parked vehicles. Talks about garage maintenance and expectations of how garages should be used. It touches on lighting and roads and while the Housing and Neighbourhood Service acknowledges that we might not be solely responsible, it makes the linkages to our partner agencies with Amy and the Shree's Head contract. And finally, it talks about CCTV systems. We've got around six hundred cameras across fifty-one sites across the city, keeping customers safe and reassured. And it also talks about advice that we give to installations of domestic CCTV, ensuring that we're meeting the guidance on legal compliance as well. Two big ones at the end is our approach to antisocial behaviour and we've just had a new antisocial behaviour policy that's quite clear on how we manage antisocial behaviour. And also our approach to working with tenants through our housing plus approach, resulting in home visits offered to tenants to identify any support needs, make sure our tenants are informed, providing regular visits which are carried out either annually or biannually and can be adjusted based on individual needs and supports. So the policy demonstrates how we engage with and involve our customers in decision-making. And in regards with our partners, it details our collaborative efforts for effective neighbourhood management, including partners within the council, public sector and the voluntary community and faith service. So in regards to consultation that we've done with our customers as we've developed this policy, we've done it in, in two ways. We've done in-person consultation and we've done this through our local area housing forums, where we've worked with locally elected members and tenants and residents associations. In total, we've liaised with twenty-six different tenants and residents associations through the local area housing forums, will give us some really valuable feedback. In addition to that, we've done online consultation. With our online consultation, we've had nine hundred and thirty individuals who have visited the consultation page and hundred and fifty-six individuals who took the survey. So the outcomes of the consultation have been instrumental in shaping the final policy proposal. Feedback from consultation highlighted strong community support for some clear and accountable neighbourhood management. The policy was well received across the board, demonstrating its relevance. In regards to our face-to-face discussions with customers and TARA's, the key outcomes were that customers expressed a desire for more information about how we consult with them about their local neighbourhoods and community walkabouts came out very strongly. So we've, we've improved our offer on neighbourhood walkabouts. They welcome that by providing detailed expectations, we aim to enhance transparency and accountability. And pests and infestations were not initially included in the policy. However, following feedback, this was added and we've incorporated measures to address these concerns, ensuring that we've got a comprehensive approach. During our online consultation, we focused on assessing community satisfaction, understanding customer priorities and evaluating the policy impacts on satisfaction. So the key outcomes from our online consultation were that sixty-two percent of people prefer staying in touch with us online and digitally. The top three areas of concern emerged as preventing and stopping bad behaviour and crime, green space maintenance and better management of waste. Many of our customers told us that it's very difficult to contact the council at times, it can be confusing and frustrating. As a result, we've included contact details for service requests under each section of the neighbourhood management policy to ensure customers are directed to the right place to improve long-term satisfaction rates. So in regards to what we're asking for today, what we've looked at is in conclusion, the neighbourhood management policy directly addresses the new consumer standards, ensuring that we've got compliance in that area. The policy provides a framework that covers various aspects of neighbourhood management, bringing together a number of separate policies into one place, which should make it much easier for customers. Housing Quality Network are a reputable consultancy in the housing sector. They've assisted us in undertaking a self-assessment and recommended the neighbourhood management policy. Their expertise in the field lends significant weight to this recommendation. The policy aims to clarify roles and responsibility, which is expected to improve service delivery and tenant satisfaction. And the policy emphasises tenant involvement and community safety, which are important for creating a positive and living environment. So we're here today, it's recommended that the Housing Policy Committee approve the draft proposed neighbourhood management policy. It aligns with regulatory requirements, is backed by expert advice, provides operational clarity, it focuses on community wellbeing, integrates various neighbourhood management aspects into a unified policy. The intended outcome are improved service delivery, tenant empowerment and enhanced neighbourhood environments.
Thanks very much. So the policy's page twenty-seventy-nine and like you said, there's links to others which all list at ninety-six, page ninety-six, and I think you might use that list quite a lot. I think it's just worth reflecting on the fact that this new policy covers such a wide range of things, it's actually useful to see in one place, all the range of things that our housing staff do across the board. Anyway, I think we've got a question from councillor Smith.
Thank you Chair, I've got a few questions. Hundred and fifty-six people that did the survey, that's not a very big proportion of our tenants. My worry is that now we have fewer tenants and residents associations than we've ever had before. In my ward, we have one TARA. And a lot of our TARA's are people that are of a certain age and we need to encourage more residents and tenants to be involved. Now, this policy sounds fantastic and it's a great idea, but how does it work in practice? So I want to ask that when you do do the things like walkabouts, that you do involve local councillors, because we're basically the people who represent, represent these tenants and residents and we rarely get invited to things like this, in my area anyway. So please, because of the lack of residents and tenants associations, I think councillors need to be more involved in their local areas and this is a, a great opportunity for us to make sure that happens. Thank you Chair.
Thank you. Dean, if you can respond to that. I think it's just worth noting, actually, the involvement of local councillors and to ensure that we are invited to walkabouts is really important. If you have a look, actually, it is specifically included in there because raised that, so it's quite right to, to do that. Dean, reflections on what councillor Smith has said?
Yeah, thank you for that councillor Smith. I think in regards to the consultation, we, we consulted with twenty-six different TARA's across the city, of which it wasn't just a single person, it was on some occasions who represented that TARA, it might have been a dozen people who represented that TARA. So we, we did consult, consult with TARA's quite substantially. In regards to the online consultation, hundred and fifty-six feedback feels, we, we can't force people, we put it online, we ask. I think in regards to consultation, we have to try different ways. So we've done the in-person stuff and we've done the online stuff and the feedback that we got felt pretty much positive. People gave us some, some feedback that we've been able to implement, which has been really useful as well. So it doesn't feel like we've wasted us time doing it, it's been reassuring. In regards to walkabouts going forward, some walkabouts are already really well attended by local councillors. If you're not getting invites, I apologise for that, but you certainly will going forward.
Great, thank you. I think going to the other side now, are you finished, Gail? Yes, I think you are, yes. Yes, councillor McGowan then.
Thank you. Again, like Gail said, we've got no TARA in Burley and we haven't had for a long, long time. But what has been really good, which I haven't heard about in, when you were doing the summary, is the, how it fits in with the CAGs, the Community Action Groups, which is key to us and has been really successful. So that partnership working, it was all very much about housing neighbourhood, which I understand, but there's a whole partnership out there, you know, antisocial behaviour, you can't tackle it on your own. And so that's where the CAGs have come in really useful. And we've had a situation recently where there was a block of four flats that nobody was living in because one had been firebombed and there was a load of issues around it. What really shocked me, we went on a walkabout with all the officers, including police, the sustainability officers, housing. And one of the suggestions was, the antisocial behaviour was, young people were coming in there every night, there was no one to stop them. But as soon as the police were called, they were just all scattering, so they'd obviously got somebody looking out and about. So one of the suggestions was, why don't we use one of the flats as a base so housing officers can call in for a cup of tea, the police can when they're out there, the sustainability officers, just for a period of months till we get on top of it and the repairs can be done. And the, I thought that was a really good suggestion, because we need to get these properties back into rent. And it came back that we wanted to charge the police eighty-five pound a week to do that. That justice and partnership working and it wasn't just for the police, it was for housing and everybody else. So I just wanted to raise that. I know you can't probably answer that specific, but I think CAGs are a massive part of this, all working together. Thank you.
I, I agree and sorry, I only gave a very brief summary. The LACs and the CAGs and the various other forums that we've got for discussing community issues are really important and housing play a major role in that. But you're right, it's not just about housing, communities are made up of different tenures and it's important that we have a joined-up approach. And, and I think it works very well, the work that we've got between the tenancy enforcement team within housing and the antisocial behaviour team within, within the council, work very, very closely together. So I appreciate that. I think in regard, I'm not going to talk specifically about the property, but in general, sharing properties with partners to use for benefits that, that meet the community. You've, you've always got the, the other issue that we've got families and households in temporary accommodation waiting for properties to become available. And therefore it's always a difficult discussion around what supersedes one over the other. And I think we have to look at it on a case-by-case basis.
Yes, Karen, I can, I'll just bring Tom in, who's indicated, might have something to add on the use of properties, I'm guessing.
Yeah, just, just, just very briefly, it's a really good point councillor McGowan actually. So I, I would, I, so as probably some members will know, I'm leading the council's overall kind of building strategy and accommodation strategy going forward, doing a lot of work around community buildings and other spaces within local places. And, and, and one of the ambitions of that piece of work is generally to look at how we co-locate better with our partners in, in local communities going forward. So I guess in a slightly more strategic way, I would, I think this conversation is the right conversation, but I think probably what we need to try to do is, is think about how best to deliver that co-location through buildings that we already own. And that might be about council housing, but actually might be about some of the other assets that we also have in some areas and how we might use those better. So I felt it might be a bit remiss of me not to say that, because I think we kind of almost get, we, we end up getting, talking in conversation about individual buildings, which is right, because it always comes down to the practicalities of how do we actually deliver this thing quickly on the ground. But I think as a council, we're really keen to take a slightly more strategic approach to some of this going forward with that same ambition, so that we don't kind of undermine the, the rent problem and the housing problem we've got, but we do deliver better services and co-location in communities.
Yeah, I'll, I'll bring you back in. Just, just worth pointing out that of course, we talked earlier on about, you know, the pressing issue on homelessness and getting every available property and also the voids, but yeah.
This seems to be what everybody's misunderstanding. We've got a block of four flats with nobody in them. It was for a temporary, I'm not talking long term, a month, two months while the repairs get done, to rent it. You weren't getting any rent anyway, because nobody was in them. And they, and they were just getting more and more vandalised and it was about having a presence in there so that work could get done and the, and things, but that, that's all it was. It wasn't a long-term, let's use it as a TARA office or anything else that we've had in the past. It was a temporary, let's have some presence in that block.
Yeah, and that's a good creative sort of suggestion, see if that could be done, so something I'm sure we'll look at. Are you done there? So go over to councillor Chaplin.
Thank, thank you Chair and, and thank, thank you Dean for, for this report. It, it certainly brings out how many different areas of, of work around council tenancies that, that we're involved in. It touches on so many things, waste management, antisocial behaviour, how you use the, the green spaces within our housing and so, and so on. You've got, and on the, and clearly it has to fit within a regulatory framework. I think the concern I have is that it's not, do you, do you feel that this, this, this policy is going to be user-friendly, both for the housing staff and for the tenants and for those TARA's that are still in existence? So that, that's my question to you. I have a comment about councillor invitations to the walkabouts. In my ward, I do go on the walkabouts because I have reached that certain age where I don't have to go to work during the day, but quite a lot of our colleagues do have to go to work in, during the day. I suspect, suspect that's the situation with Mark Jones, who's not with us this morning. So it's, it's not so practical for them, but I've certainly seized that opportunity to get round on those walkabouts, see what local residents see and engage with housing officers and, and others on the issues that are around in, in my ward. Particularly appreciated in this last year or two, we've expanded out. When I first started doing the walkabouts, we were only going where the TARA's were in existence. And very sadly, like with you, Gail, I've lost three TARA's since 2017. So I'm, I'm down, in, in Southie Ward, we're down to two, two active TARA's now. And, and they both do need and value, I believe, the, the support that the housing, the, the neighbourhood engagement officers give, people like Jackie Paddock, doing really useful work with the TARA's, not just in my ward, but where they're in existence elsewhere. So yes, it's just, just So yes, it's just a concern really that this is a usable policy and will be, that our tenants will be able to engage with it.
Okay, so Dean, is the policy user-friendly?
Yeah, thanks for that, councillor Chaplin. Yeah, I think, I think that's the purpose of it really, is we have so many policies, procedures, contact details, that we as officers sometimes find it difficult to navigate. You as councillors must, our customers certainly do, to bring it all together in one place where you can click onto our website, and there are links that take you to the various places, there are contact details, there are set service standards saying what you can expect. It puts us out there that if we're not meeting those service standards, we can be challenged on it because we've clearly set out what they are, then I actually think it's a real good step forward in regards to being better than we were before, more user-friendly. Of course, this will need updating, it'll be a live document as things change, and we have to add dates to it, for example. The walkabout's been a really good example, we've committed to doing a minimum of two walkabouts per neighbourhood per year. In some cases, some taras have already been in touch and said, but we currently do more than that, and we will, wherever possible, make local arrangements to facilitate it. But I think having something out there that says, here's when your walkabout's going to be, working with local communities about when they want them to take place and where they want them to take place, advertising that as well, clearly when it's going to take place, where they're going to be meeting from and what areas they're going to be covering. I think we're communicating much better about our approach to neighbourhood walkabouts.
Thank you, Dean. Just one little frustration, we're in the PERP period at the moment, and I've taken out about four or five walkabouts in Southey Ward, because they just happened to be at that time, so there will be, there will be a number of councillors who are unable to attend these walkabouts, because we haven't to be seen out and about with the council officers.
It'll soon be over.
Well, I mean, everywhere I go, I tell people to vote Labour, as I'm sure Gail tells people to vote for her party, but...
You're just not supposed to do it in here in this meeting, but there we are. But no, walkabouts, yeah, to resume after the general election when everything calms down. Very good, thanks. Councillor Turpin?
Thank you. I just want to ask about, okay, let me step back. So I have seen many, many plans in the council, and what you don't see is how they're having an impact on what the council does, you know, and loathe to say it, but you know, lots of these plans turn out to be hollow words. So how are we going to measure this? And I can pick on a very specific one, the economic impact, improving the standard of living and attractiveness of neighbourhoods. For two years, we've been trying to get the council to take the bit of land around Newfield Green shops back in house, where the owner put it in a company, folded the company, it now belongs to the Crown. I was told two years ago, the government has said, we can take the land on for the price of the legal fees to transfer it. Two years ago, still nothing, potholes the size of this desk, you could lie in them. Rubbish, the rubbish there, as we speak, the rubbish piled up behind those shops, you would need an HGV to move it, and it happens all the time. Streets ahead, it's out of their remit, they won't deal with it. Housing, out of their remit, they won't deal with it. Environmental Protection Service is the only department who deal with that rubbish. This is a shopping centre, you know, that is a direct economic impact. I've emailed, it took me months, I had to ask David Hollis to get a response from Corporate Property Services and the chief executive to an email, because they just weren't replying. I sent another email two weeks ago, still no reply. I got a response yesterday of Kate Joseph's secretary saying, oh, sorry, I'll get an answer to you as soon as possible. These are all things that can be done that are pretty straightforward and obvious, especially to those of us who are honestly absolutely fed up of defending the council. So how is this? How are we going to know that this is actually being implemented, that this is not just writing on yet another report?
Okay, up to you, Dean, to answer that.
That's fine. I think in general, how do we know how our customers feel about the neighbours that they live in? We carry out a survey every month, and we have to do that, it's part of the new regulation guidelines, of we ask 12 questions to our customers randomly around tenant satisfaction measures, about how they feel in their neighbourhoods. So we've currently got those measures in place, we've been collecting that data for 12 months, all local authorities and registered providers have to collect it, and one of the questions is about how they feel about the upkeep of their neighbourhood. So that's one of the ways that we'll measure it. We've got the forums, local area housing forums, we carry out various other types of surveys, and I think just on the issue that you raised there, councillor Turpin, around the shops etc, and mentioned a number of departments within the council, this is a housing management policy, neighbourhood management policy that's through the housing service, and we have to be careful about what we spend tenants' money on, and upkeep of shops and precincts etc may not come into what the HRA is there to cover.
Yeah, and that is an issue, is that no department in the council seems to want to take responsibility for this land, but it's having a massive negative impact on residents, and basically everybody who works there, you know, we've all, Tom, we've all had stuff on our desks about this place, haven't we? And there's just, there's no effort to make it, to resolve it. We have the liability, we have the reputational damage, it's horrible, it's horrible for our residents, it's a horrible experience for us, but until they say, oh, well, the housing department needs to take responsibility for it, oh, that's someone that, and no one wants to. Well, the thing is, is that we've already got the liability for it, we're already paying to have the rubbish removed, but we've got no control over it, you know, it makes no sense that we're still having to pay. I was told that every time they clear some rubbish, they write an invoice and keep it on file so the next owner, they can give all the invoices to, it's nonsense.
Is it worth bringing in Tom?
I was just going to make two really brief points, councillor Turpin, and I suppose, well, three, let's do three, shall we? So the first point I will make is let me take Newfield Green away very specifically, and I will try to get a coordinated response in terms of where we are with that council, so leave that one with me and I will take that out of the room. The other two points I was just really briefly going to make is, what you are describing is something that this council has acknowledged actually, through the work we've been doing around our customer experience strategy really recently. So we've agreed new customer experience strategy, and at the heart of that is a clear acknowledgement that actually the council has, over a period of time, got itself into a slightly silendered way of doing things, and actually what we really need to do is to find ways to bring ourselves together as a council within our, you know, we always have to have structures, but actually to try to be a little bit less worried about structures and a little more worried about the outcomes for our tenants. So what I would try to assure you about is there is a huge piece of work starting now and a transformation piece of work in this council where we are absolutely determined to solve the sorts of things that you've just described, because I know across the whole member cohort, that sort of thing, people see quite a lot, and I see quite a lot coming across my desk. The other thing, just in terms of performance monitoring specifically around the neighbourhood thing, I was just going to make the point that this is kind of the next item on the agenda actually. So we are very clearly bound now by a number of measures from the housing ombudsman and the regulator, and a large proportion of that is around satisfaction and satisfaction with neighbourhood and housing and other things, and that's sort of dictated, you can see that within the next paper along. So we're very much aligning all of our housing activity to these measures now, because these measures are very much what we will be judged against and regulated against going forward.
Thanks very much, that's helpful, and it's good to have that commitment in relation to the site that you're on. It seems like a good point to move on, bearing in mind we've still got five substantial items to go on. Sorry, put your mic on.
I'll let it go.
All right, okay, we can come back to these in a bit. Shall we move to, I'm not hearing anyone saying that they disagree with this, I've got recommendations on page 64, which is essentially to approve the new policy, which you'll find on page 79, and for mine is to grant delegated authority to the director of housing, to make any necessary changes required to the section regarding annual visits to individual homes, because there's the annual visit steering group review which is taking place at the moment, so it's to fill in those gaps there. People happy to approve that? No disagreements there, yeah, great, thanks. So let's take that as unanimously approved, and move on to the next item, which mine itself is, so the, yes, the submission to the regulator and separately to the ombudsman. So Chris, welcome, I think this is, yeah, you're formally presenting your first paper to this committee, isn't it? But over to you.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you for your welcome. And this is week seven for me at Sheffield City Council, but well over 25 years of working to the housing regulator and to various governance bodies, so this, as I said to the chair earlier, this isn't my first radio, it's just my first ball here, so bear with me if I need to refer to colleagues if there's anything, questions around things that have happened in the past, but I can certainly tell you about this particular submission and things that we're doing in the future going forward in relation to it. So I think the first thing to say is, these are statutory requirements now for Sheffield City Council to submit, and for all council who still take responsibility for their social housing stock, but also obviously other social housing providers, including for profits. So this is new to Sheffield, and actually elements of this is new to the social housing sector. New regulations were passed through an act in the summer of last year. One of those relates to the consumer standard, which you'll see referenced in here, and the particular element of that consumer standard, which talks about performance and feedback, which is the item we were just talking about, is in relation to what's called the tenant satisfaction measures. And I'll briefly explain a bit more about each of those in a minute. So the complaints handling assessment goes back to the housing ombudsman, and the tenant satisfaction measures submission goes back to the regulator of social housing, and this committee has responsibility for that latter element through delegated authorities. So starting with the ombudsman, the housing ombudsman element, this is in relation to the complaints handling code, this was introduced in 2020, it's had two further updates since then, and interestingly and relevant to this, the last update was in March 2020, so this, so some of the elements in that requirement are fairly new, but this return talks to that. The council's response was put together by the housing and repairs team, they undertook a self-assessment to ensure the council applied with the code, and particularly, and I think importantly, where improvements can be made, and that is an element that the ombudsman is looking for from that self-assessment, not just to submit something and for it to be archived and filed, but where can providers get better, and in particular for the council, those areas were around times to respond to the, to those two key complaints. And because that isn't where we want it to be, we've introduced a number of measures to improve that, from performance surgeries to increased monitoring of performance and capturing that continued learning. So in essence, that's the substantive reason why these are completed, the regulatory compliance, but also they talk to the council's plan in relation to people and in relation to listening and involving people from the city as well. So I think that complaints really talks to that. If I move on to the TSMs, tenant satisfaction measures, which is the social housing regulators, this is really a performance monitoring and benchmarking. Previously, the social housing sector has had a set of measures that were agreed voluntarily and applied to the social housing sector, particularly adopted by housing associations. This brings everybody more into line. The measures are, and how you measure them, and what you measure are quite clearly laid out within that return, and social housing providers are then required to submit these by the 30th of June. I think that gives a real opportunity for transparency, as I say, to standardise, but also to draw out best practice, which we will do as part of that. And these measures, I think particularly, again, talk to the council's plan around greater neighbourhoods and for caring and engaged communities. In response to some of this, we've set up some new communication and tenant satisfaction panels to provide that feedback, to give that transparency, and to keep the council on account on that. You will see, so that's the overall rationale between those, for those two submissions, and for this committee to note them. You'll see plenty of details around complaints in page 140 onwards, noting that the most recent performance isn't in yet, so that isn't fully completed, but it's there or thereabouts, and then the tenant satisfaction measures from page 147, so I would recommend the committee note these. Return any comments. Thank you, Chair.
Right, thank you very much. I wish to take any questions on that. Just one, Chair, so maybe these have been sent in, both the issues by the 30th of June, haven't they? You've mentioned that the response to the regulator is, doesn't require some amendments in once those figures are finalised. With the reports to the ombudsman, as far as the office concerned, is that effectively complete? No further changes anticipated on that?
Sorry, and now we are getting back on the ball. There is a, I think we've just got to check the finalised the figures on the, where the ombudsman has come back to us on material complaints, and because there's some time lag in that, which we're just closing now.
Right, yeah, thanks, that's very helpful. Right then, okay, questions, councillor Hollis?
Yeah, that was what I was, I was going to notice, was page 143, you've got, you know, query number of tenant complaints, and is that what you're talking about, Chris? That's going to be filled in? Just, can we get a link to it when it's finished?
Absolutely, yes, that's exactly what I was going to, councillor, and yes, you'll get that. I think it's, the issue we have is timelines, because of the previous PERP, this committee fell now, this is the only time, we've got a very short time to get them back into the regular for that deadline of the 30th of June, but yes, we'll get them circulated.
Thank you.
Right, thanks very much. So there's no further questions on that, you've got that, and it is pleasing to see that it's really comprehensive, that you've done the assessment, we're able to say we're compliant on each of the things for the ombudsman there, and there is, you know, a new system, this is here, the repulsive side of regulation here. So I wonder if we can just have a look at the recommendations and deal with those, not seeing any dissent on that. So on page 104, so we're being asked to note the outcomes of the complaints self-assessment, note the contents of the complaints and service improvement report, which is, so it's appendix A and appendix B, note the TSM performance scores, that's the document in appendix C, and then provide any comments, so without comment there. I'm just going to ask members if we feel we also ought to be approving the content of the documents that we've seen here, rather than just noting them. I'm assuming that we should do this, and I also note that it is actually a requirement of the ombudsman that there's approval by the governing body, so it would be kind of remiss of us if we didn't actually just record that approval. Are people happy with that suggestion? So we're suggesting, I think, just a further clause of approving the contents of the documents submitted this, subject to the necessary amendments to be provided by the director before submission by the 30th of June. Would that affect? Is that okay? And Amanda, can we make, get you to sort of magic up some words that sounded a bit like what I've just said, but can make sense? Okay. Okay, so were those, are people happy to approve those, that set of recommendations there? Thanks for doing all the work that goes into what goes behind this to present everyone involved. It's a big step forward actually, I think, that we get into this position. So thanks, okay, let's move on to the next item. We've got unanimous decision on that. Item 10, isn't it? So we're getting slightly more, hopefully slightly more routine things. This is, this is Dean, isn't it, the stock condition surveys and commissioning? Wrong Dean, Dean, you're the wrong Dean, look at your notice. See, we've got too many Deans here and we're not even at the end of it yet, yeah. And it is, yeah, might have been a surprise one. Exactly, yeah. Right, sorry, Dean, over to you, the stock condition report.
Thank you Chair, I think one of the things we want to start with is that you've heard a lot today around regulation and new consumer standards. I think one of the things that we're going to do in the future, knowledge briefing, is provide more information in relation to what the new regulatory framework looks like. So when we talk about regulatory standards, it's very clear what we are referring to. The report that you've got in front here, gender item 10, is a request for, to approve £4.5 million worth of revenue spending for us to do some of our work in relation to the new consumer standards within the regulatory framework. One of our requirements is that we've got to know about our stock. We've got to know about the condition of our stock, we've got to know how it's performing. And what we've got to be able to demonstrate both to the regulator and to yourselves is that we're using the stock condition data that we have to allow us to make the right investment decisions on the capital programme. So we know what's happening with our roofs, we know the conditions of our kitchens and our bathrooms. But also we know around our communal spaces and we know about the externals of our properties as well. We, at the moment, we've probably got around about 50% of our stock condition data. So it's not a full picture that we're using to make some of our investment decisions. So we need to make sure we're in a position where we've got as much information as possible to allow us to have those conversations. Similarly, we've also got some of our stock that we may want to make future investment decisions on, but we need to have a look at how much life those properties have got left. When we start talking about retrofit for net zero and decarbonisation and installing air source or ground source heat pumps, are those properties actually fit and will they have another 10, 20, 30 years left in their lifespan to actually justify the investment that we will actually spend in those properties? So there's a bit of information there in relation to the safety and quality standard within the regulatory framework that this fits into. But really, this, the resources that have been earmarked within the business plan here give us the capacity so by the end of the 25, 26 financial year, we'll be, have around about 90% stock condition data, which will mean we're in a better position. That timescale also fits very well in relation to presenting to our housing policy committee what our asset management strategy will look like. So we're very clear around what is our strategic position in relation to our investments in our stock, what that looks like and how we're going to use the resources. So I'm happy to take questions Chair.
Thanks very much, questions to councillor Baker first?
I think it's a question and a statement, I mean, this work desperately needs doing. We need to know what we're dealing with amongst our housing stock. At the moment, if councillors have got a problem with a certain type of property within their area and they know it's a problem that needs planned maintenance, it can take years to get it on the list for planned maintenance. We can't have that happening. We need to know the condition of the stock we've got, how we deal with it. Is it cost effective to deal with it is something that with some properties along the line, we're going to have to think about. We have a certain amount of data already, which Dean, you have already referred to. And I guess we're going to put that in, but obviously keep it updated. Because my concern is, if it's going to be in for two years, what's true now might not be true in two years. We need to make sure that our data is upgraded all the time and we've got an active list. Because unless we get this information, we cannot plan for the future. And we've been asking for it for a long time and we, we've had bits and goes of it. But this looks, and we're hoping that this will give us the foundations we need to do our job. Obviously concerned that it'll take two years, obviously concerned that it costs 4.5 million. And obviously concerned that that'll only give us a 90% knowledge. But basically a really excellent start, thank you Chair.
Thank you, I wonder if I could take councillor Norris first for bringing in Dean?
This seems to me like a clear example of a genuine invest to save, spend. I know just, I've only been to one Bleedless Valley management board so far, but I know that one of the elements of the delay there has been lack of accurate stock condition data. So I really welcome this. I just wanted to check, I don't know how we got into this position in the first place that we had such a backlog. What assurances can we have that once we're up to date, we will keep up to date so we will not be in this position again?
Thanks, and I shall take councillor Turpin as well.
Thanks. Yeah, I mean, it's, that was really eye opening in that meeting, Dean said, how can we decide what to do to the buildings? We don't know what state the buildings are in. And it's really quite staggering to think that the council doesn't have this information and like, you know, why? But yeah, it is, it is welcome that it's going to be happening. I'll just scrutinise the decision a little bit. So was it £4.5 million, 15,000 properties, that's £300 per property. So I want to know what exactly are we getting for this £4.5 million? Is it going to be the same for every home? Are the documents, regulatory documents, or are they some kind of internal spreadsheet? And also, what is going to be done? Is part of this, what are you calling it, stock assessment, stock survey? Will it also include recommendations such as, you know, like something you might get on an EPC certificate?
Right, thanks, Dean, you've got notes of what's being asked there?
Thank you Chair, just in response to councillor Baker's comment that the expectation is we'll get to as close as 100% as we can in relation to the stock condition data. And I want to give the committee the assurance that, and it's not just the committee, it's also our regulator, the assurance that we will then be making sure every property has a stock condition survey each five years. So once we've got as close to 100% as we can, we'll be making sure 20% of our stock each year within a five-year cycle gets an updated stock condition survey so that the knowledge that we have is as up to date and as accurate as we can make it in that respect. Councillor Norris, in relation to why are we where we are? There's probably a multitude of reasons there. The one word that I would hate to use, and I'm going to use it, I apologise, is partly, some of this is Covid related because we made a strategic decision as a council that we would suspend stock condition surveys during that period. We also have had an issue, and this is no excuse, in relation to resource management. So one of the things that we've recognised is rather than bringing our own internal staff in to do some of this work, it is prudent on us to actually go to an external contractor who's got the expertise to be able to do that work on our behalf. So the work will be done. Councillor Turpin, in relation to the standardisation, yes, it's a standardised process. And the inspections will look at a number of issues. Some of that is the HHS or SNL, I apologise for using acronisms there, it's the Housing Health Rating System that we use, which is a regulatory requirement that says how our house is performing. And as part of that, we'll identify what we class as category one and category two hazards that could be a hazard to human life or major issues that need to be addressed. So there will be standardised forms that come out of that. Some of the works of the 15,000 extra surveys that we will be commissioning, we will be using our own internal systems to data analyse the information. What I've got to do in this conversation that I'll be having with Chris is, have we got the right resources internally to analyse the data that is coming through? So whilst it might take nearly two years for us to get to a point where by will be at 90%, we will be mobilising this contract in September of this year. So we'll be receiving somewhere around 800 to 1,000 stock condition surveys coming through each month. What we've got to do is understand what's coming through every month, do the analysis of that and track that through month on month. And if it's showing trends through that period, we've got a better understanding. What that will give us, and we're probably having conversations at future committees, is that whilst we've already got an approved five-year capital programme, I'll be coming to future meetings to say, on the back of the stock condition surveys that we've been doing, we want to subtly change that because some of the priorities and the requirements within some of that stock has changed. And it may be that we've got a different priority system in relation to where is our critical stock that needs investment that actually we may not even have identified yet. We've also got to do work with Tom and his team, so it's not just around the stock condition data. It's how do we triangulate all the information that we've got coming in? So Tom's team have lots of information in relation to where do they spend responsive repairs monies? We will overlay that with the stock condition data, but we'll also be using our tenant satisfaction measures and the quantitative data they get back from our customers, who also tell us they've got challenges as well. So it's not just going to be one data source that we drive through this. It will be a triangulation of information to get the best holistic picture that we can. And again, so when we come at a future committee meeting with an asset management strategy, it's robust, it's data driven. And there will be some challenging conversations to be had at that particular point around where we prioritise our potential £18, £19 million a year investment on our stock.
Thanks very much. Chris, did you want to come in there and then I'll come back?
Just briefly Chair, because I think Dean's picked up the key point. But the vision here and the expectation here is that, very much what Dean talked about in the end, which is we will have a lot of information about our customers' expectations and our customers' needs and what those residents want and how they need those services delivered. And then we'll have a lot of information about their homes. And then we'll have to make decisions in terms of how we deliver services and what we invest in relation to both sets of those data. So it's for the first time bringing those two sets of information together and having them up today. And that's where, you know, the direction of travel that we're heading in.
Right, thanks very much.
Yeah, so just quickly, it does sound like quite a mammoth data collection. And I really appreciate what you're saying about, you know, the importance of managing it and what you actually can read from it. I would be interested in seeing a report, are they, is it, are they all the same for every, is it the same format for every home? And what I was saying is, you know, exactly what's in it, because in the thing it just says, will include EPCs and the housing risk assessment. So are there other actual assessments such as like ventilation, occupancy damp, whatever, you know? That's what I'm just interested in knowing what exactly is recorded. And if it's too complicated to answer now, would you be able to share an example with me at some point?
Yeah, sorry, yes, councillor Baker?
Just a suggestion, when it's up and running and going, can Dean come back and give us a briefing? I mean, it might not have to be here, it might be to work, better to work or a knowledge briefing. But then we can actually ask the questions about it and understand it ourselves, which would be really useful if that's possible.
Yes, and certainly if the committee wants that, then I think we can ask that to go on the briefings. We'll need to work out what is going to be on our programme briefings, but yes, why not? It does make sense. Can I just tack on an extra question in addition to councillor Turpin's? Will tenants get a copy of the survey given to them so they can spot errors and things? I assume they get a copy of EPC certificates anyway, so it'd be good if they could be given something so that they're included in the loop.
Chair, that's one decision that we've not landed on yet in relation to it. Historically, we've not given the stock condition survey to our residents. But in relation to transparency and the work that we're doing on customer satisfaction and the TSMs, that's definitely one that's on our agenda in relation to how do we become more open and transparent in our decision making?
Thanks very much, it would be useful to do that, and certainly from my point of view, I think it'd be useful. It's really useful when tenants can help weed out basic errors at an early stage. Were, are you okay with your question yet? Okay, councillor Norris?
Just an addition to that that occurred to me as you were speaking, is that I know with the external wall insulation that we've had on Sevenside in my ward and there's, in those archetypes across the city, they used the data that they'd got to produce that solution and they gave it also to people who owned at the same time, who were owners, because it was the same building, so that they could then use that as a basis for looking for grants and to try and get some of the similar work done on their houses. So it just occurred to me that it might also be useful in terms of the net zero work for the owner occupiers.
Dean, yes?
I completely agree with that councillor Norris, in that our estates are no longer wholly council estates like they used to be 30 years ago. They are multi-tenure estates. And as we move to new solutions in relation to driving our EPC data and going to net zero, external wall insulation is one of the major elements of that. And I've had experience in places previously where streets look like Lego streets, that one property has had the external wall insulation, but the owner occupation property next door is not. And it creates a challenge for us. So we've got to have the conversations that how do we provide a neighbourhood solution to driving net zero? And this is why the whole, the overall council strategy into sustainability and decarbonisation comes into play in that particular question.
Thanks very much, yeah, councillor Smith?
Thank you for asking that question because it's made my brain tick a bit. It's quite clear when you drive on estates like Hackenthorpe that we can now say, oh, that's council, that's not because it's not had its roof done. But I've had people contact me saying they've approached the council during that work to ask if the work could be done, them to pay for it, but the answer was categorically no. Now, that seems to me a bit harsh and I've tried to get my head around it. So based on what councillor Norris said and the information we have about Hackenthorpe, surely it would be beneficial to the council to allow right to buyers to have their properties done at the same time and be given, you know, obviously they have to pay for it. But it would help the whole estate because my vision is that perhaps one day we can bring some of these right to buy houses back in-house and then they'll have already had work done. Thank you.
Can I suggest that park that and bring that into the workshops we have for the whole net zero work? I mean, it's moving slightly away from the stock surveys, but yeah, I'm completely on board with that. Karen, do you want to, councillor McGowan?
It was only quick on what Gail said, it's not only that, it's the issues where one property has it done and the other doesn't. And then these issues arise from, you know, the roofs. I've had issues from residents that didn't have the work done because they're private and saying that the new roof caused them issues on their property, so there's all that as well.
Right, okay, I think that's good points. Shall we park that discussion there? Can we just look at the recommendations? Because ultimately the decision for today is a relatively simple one and it's about, it's on page 158. It's about agreeing to spend £4.5 million of HRA funding to do the 15,000 stock condition surveys. So if we're happy to approve that and no one dissented, yeah, okay. So let's treat that as approved unanimously. Thanks for that. And then we'll follow it up, as you said, councillor Baker, with briefings and hopefully feed into the workshops. Okay, we've got, what's the next item? Are we on the water now? So yeah, item 11. So I'm your third Dean of the day, welcome Dean. Choose any on the name cards with Dean written on it. Yeah, that's right. Dean, over to you. Again, assume that you've read the report here, that we've read the report. I think you're presenting something which is a continuation of existing practice. Perhaps don't need to dwell on it too much. Just need to flag up, this is an item where there is a section of the report that's closed to the public. So I'm just going to ask if any members want to ask specifically about that. Can you flag that up so that we can close off meeting? I'm hoping we don't need to, it doesn't seem to be good. Is this a procedural point?
Well, I do want to ask about, something about how the finances... Well, I do want to ask about something about how the finances will work. Would that mean that we're going to have to close the meeting for a little bit?
We perhaps will do, yeah. Can you think about what your question is and in relation to the documents referring to? And see whether you think we need to close the meeting? Because yeah, if you do want to discuss that, then we will need to. Shall I ask Dean to present the summary of what we're being asked to decide here? And he might want to think about how much we need to discuss it now and how much is just information we can pick up afterwards. I'll hand over to Dean anyway. Yeah, welcome Dean. Do you want to introduce yourself and go from there?
Yeah, hello. Good morning, everybody. My name's Dean Peker. So I am the Service Manager in the Income Management and Financial Inclusion Team within the council. So in old money, that's rent. So we manage the rent accounts for all the council tenancies. We collect the rent, we collect arrears, we collect former tenant arrears, we support tenants around their finances generally, lead on financial inclusion for the housing service. So I'm here today to basically to ask, the request of the committee is to agree the renewal of a new three-year contract to continue to collect water rates from Yorkshire Water customers on their behalf. This is a longstanding arrangement that's been going back decades, which benefits customers, the council and Yorkshire Water. The contract is very similar to the previous contract, which expired in March twenty-four, but we have got an amendment to that and we are continuing on the previous contract currently at the moment. It is Yorkshire Water's contract. And as I said, the contract is very similar to the previous one and to ones prior to that as well. It does massively benefit all parties, particularly customers. So examples of how that benefits customers and tenants are that there is one charge for rent and water rates together that tenants can pay. Because with the council, we have a huge array of payment options for tenants, which they may not get if they were paying Yorkshire Water. So there's a number of different ways that they can pay and there's another, and frequencies in which they can pay as well. Weekly, fortnight play, monthly are all options that are available to tenants. There's a huge amount of support that's provided to tenants because Yorkshire Water is collected with their rent. So we and my team are helping people to claim benefits, income maximisation, access external funding where it might be available. And a huge one is Yorkshire Water's own support scheme. So we help thousands of tenants to access Yorkshire Water's own support schemes, which reduces their water rates liability, which they will probably may not be aware of if we were not collecting the water rates with the rent. It's important to, it is important to mention and to clarify that the council have always and will continue to act as an agent of Yorkshire Water. And we are not a reseller of water. This means it includes that Yorkshire Water set the charges for the water rates and we just collect them on their behalf. This is unlike examples elsewhere where other local authorities have been found to be water resellers and have been having to pay compensation to large amounts of customers. So the recommendations are in the report to receive and consider the contents of the report, to approve the terms of the contract offered by Yorkshire Water to allow the council to enter into the new contract, to collect water rates on behalf of their customers and delegate authority to the executive director of neighbourhoods to complete all necessary documentation. I've tried to keep that brief, Chair.
Yeah, no, that is a good summary. Thanks very much. Okay. Just got a, yeah, a question about that. Yeah, that's fine. I think it's a perfectly okay question. Can just, who else wants to ask questions? Just councillor Norris. Shall I just go to you first?
It just seems all really straightforward and sensible. I just, it was only an understanding question. Five point three, there's a maximum bad debt write-off provision of four hundred thousand pounds per annum. What is that? Oh, sorry.
Sorry, Chair.
I shouldn't have said that out loud.
Can I just check what it says? Are you asking about bad debt provision? Can I just check? Can I ask councillor Turpin to read out your question? Because it's possibly the question you were trying to ask.
Yeah.
Is.
Yeah, sorry about this question.
Paul, ask your question.
So the question I wanted to ask, which seems to be approved. Will the council be liable for unpaid rates from this sum of money?
Is that the question that you're getting at? Yeah, so yeah, is that a question that you can answer openly in a public meeting?
So I have taken advice on legal that the contract itself was exempt document and private confidential. I'm happy to answer a question around payments and how we receive payment. I'm not actually sure myself one hundred per cent whether or not I should do that in the open meeting.
The question is now being asked. Can it not be answered by email?
I think it can be. Just give me a moment. I don't think there's a problem with actually asking that question in a general sense.
Just with the chair, just to say that obviously I think legal have advised, haven't they, that anything to do with the contracts, it's commercially sensitive. Obviously, it's not going to be discussed and can't be. I think members are asking specifically is, I mean, obviously is the council and obviously non-payment, isn't it? And I presume it's our write-off in that respect, isn't it? The only thing I don't know and I don't have the detail of is, is that part of our contract with the water authority? Because that will answer the question, if you can answer it or not. Because if anything just directly related to that contract, that obviously that's where you've got to limit, you can't answer any questions on that at all.
I think that is part of the contract, that's part of the commercial information. I think there's a very general question, which I think I can answer in response to councillor Turpin around, do we pay? Is the question, do we pay any uncollected water rates? The answer to that is no. So if we do not collect water rates, we don't pay that monies to Yorkshire Water. We only pay what we collect.
Thanks. I think that's a helpful way of answering it. I think what we're getting at really is whether, by interest contract, we're exposing the council's one due risk in the area. And I think that we've got, I think you're giving us reassurance, aren't you, that we're not at one due risk there? Thanks very much, yeah. I think actually it's an important issue.
Sorry about that, folks.
No, no, that's absolutely fine. Yeah, I mean, I think it's probably an open question as to whether this absolutely has to be exempt from the public no-则s, but we don't need to decide that today. Okay, so, yeah, thanks. Clear explanation of what this proposal is to renew the contract that, as you said, we've had to twenty years. So we've got recommendation on page one hundred and seventy, haven't we? Just have a look at that. So recommend housing policy could, if we just ignore one, because we've had this report now and we're being asked to resolve to authorise the entry into the contract offered by Yorkshire Water to a new contract to collect water rates on their behalf from council tenants. And then secondly, to delegate authority to the executive director to complete all the necessary documentation. So perhaps if we take those recommendations, just leaving off recommendation one because it's irrelevant now. People happy to agree that? Yeah, great, thanks. So we'll take this unanimous, going to points two and three on that in effect, Amanda. Thank you very much. Okay, getting through this. So we've got to twelve o'clock. Next one is windows and doors. So that's Tom, not Dean, but Tom, over to you.
Not Dean. I'll be very brief. So this is a report to go out to procure a contract for window and door replacement through the repair service. What we currently have effectively is two contracts. So we have a, oh, sorry, not two contracts. We have a slightly fragmented system is the best way of putting it actually. So what currently happens is we get a request to repair a window or a door. My team go out and survey it. They then pass that surveying result on to a window. If it can be repaired, the service repairs it. If it needs replacing, it's then passed to a contractor. That process puts a delay in the system actually in reality, because it means there's handoffs between two different service areas. So what we're intending to do here is to go to procure a contract for the full process. If it's a repair, it will still come back to the service to be done. So we're not outsourcing anything we currently do. It's just about consolidation of a contractual arrangement. There's no financial implication to this. It's within the existing budget. So we will be, all the work is the same work that we're previously doing, just being delivered in a slightly different manner, a more integrated manner, and hopefully a much quicker manner. So that's the report.
Thanks very much. Okay, so doors and windows getting done. I think we all know there have been delays. Any questions on that? If, sorry, you have, yes. Yes, councillor Norris first.
Just when we were talking about this in knowledge briefing, I think, can I confirm that this will include commissioning a new specification of communal doors and potentially bin-stalled doors for the flats and maisonettes where repeated breaking of those doors and then, you know, what we've got at the moment is broken frequently, repaired frequently. And that's an ongoing cost for us and an ongoing security issue for tenants. And you were saying something about we're going to use this to commission a new specification for those entry doors.
Yes, it's worth saying this is kind of separate in a sense to the specification, because the specification comes from housing and this contract will deliver on whatever specification.
Housing gives.
Housing give. But we're working very closely with the housing service. We've acknowledged the issue, councillor Norris, through the meeting. You're absolutely right in terms of what we don't want to be doing is, you know, replacing a door. And then because we've not specified it right, ten minutes, you know, two days later, somebody comes and kicks it in again and we're going to have to go and replace it again. So we are working with housing services to make sure we get a specification reviewed and right and better going forward. But this will deliver whatever specification we provide. So that's the kind of the position.
Yeah, I know it's just a related thing to that. I know councillor Johnson passed that the South Yorkshire Police is designing out crime officer got in touch. And that also seems to be a sensible person to talk to in terms of commissioning things of the right specification. And are they going to be involved?
We'll certainly be in touch with them to look at the specification going forward, councillor Norris, yeah.
Thanks.
Yeah, so just to clarify that, so yeah, approach from South Yorkshire Police, just a record. Approach from South Yorkshire Police and their role in designing out crime. So I think they have a standard called secured by design and it's about, they've got some suggestions there. So passed on to you, Tom. And yeah, it makes sense to do that. So that's it. Just as a side point, they also recommend that it would be very helpful if the procurement should be kept local. So a local manufacturer and installation company, which is hopefully in line with what we do in Sheffield City Council. But of course, there is an aspect of security that comes in with the benefits of working with local suppliers. So that's worth flagging up too. And I hope that's something that we could all endorse. Just also for the committee's information, the contact at the police there is called Dean. Just saying. So yeah, this is not a Dean-free item, just in case you thought it was. Okay, good. Where were we? Councillor Chaplin?
Yes, yeah, thanks for this report, Tom. Just for clarity, will this contract cover all those council-owned properties that weren't built by either the direct works department, well, basically to council standard? Everything from the Victorian terraces that we've taken on through to, such as the artisan dwellings that are on Foxhill Crescent that were bought in the mid-teens?
That's the intention, yeah. So the contract covers the whole range of diverse property door types and window types we have across our estate.
In that case, if this works, that really will be good news. Because I think we've all experienced certainly delays in waiting times and getting to the right spec so that the, those previously difficult to repair jobs have taken too long to deal with. So I welcome this report. Thank you, Chair.
Good, thanks. I think you're looking at the window of opportunity, aren't you? Thanks. Councillor Turpin?
Thanks. Yes, so on the subject's already discussed, I would like to amend this recommendation. I think that a five million pound contract, okay, so Sheffield has several good, professional, well-established window companies. And I would like to assure that they receive the contracts and not some national firm. Because I think it might just be a little bit big for a small company. So I would amend it that the contracts be split into two. And that it must be from, the company must be from within the boundaries of Sheffield. And that the minimum standard is the one requested by the police. Obviously, they're not words for an amendment, but.
So, yes, Chair.
I think we need to take some advice from a procurement point of view, because obviously we've got procurement rules that we can't undermine. So if we're going to, it's like anything, you can't segregate it down into certain areas. I know what you're saying about it being a local, it may be something that could be considered. But I don't think you can, from a procurement process, I think that would be quite difficult without taking, I'm not sure. Because I don't actually know the ins and outs of the detail of the actual contract. But I think it is difficult because we have to go out, don't we? We can't exclude people from certain things.
Okay, sorry, okay. I'll go back to Tom, who can probably answer the question about what's like dabbling in practice. I mean, I think it's fair to say that we do in our constitution have arranged this for, in effect, by local policy. So to the extent we can use that, we can use that. Do you want to just clarify something? And then I'll go to Tom.
Is that there are services that the council procures whereby the same service can be provided by multiple providers who are on a framework. You know, so that's kind of where I'm getting at, that the contract could be split up and it could definitely be provided locally.
Right, so Tom, I'll just go straight to you. So we're looking at whether we can incorporate the police request and about making sure that it's for the smaller businesses.
So I think there's a few different things at play here from a procurement perspective. So the first thing is this, we are not procuring a specification. So the specification is set by housing. So if we change the specification through housing, this will deliver an enhanced specification, councillor Turpin. So the recommendation for this to include a new specification isn't part of this decision. This is literally procuring to deliver against housing specification. So if housing changes specification, this will change and what is delivered will change. So we don't, we may need to change the specification, but we don't need to change the specification as part of this report. From a procurement perspective, we, you know, procurement law simply wouldn't allow us to put a boundary around the procurement in that way. What we can do and what we do do is within the social value part of any procurement in the council, we always score higher and give, you know, a priority through the scoring process to local business. We always do that as part and parcel of our general procurement. But, you know, I will use the word unfortunately, we're not allowed to sort of put a boundary around it. I have to say, having done procurements for years and years and years, it's probably one of those things that in procurement law we would potentially change if we could. But it is the law and we can't do that. Dean's just passed me a quick note to say that within the specification for housing doors already, we have secured by design in the specification. But clearly now we've got contacts at the police, we'll both be doing a bit of work just to firm some of that up. In terms of the actual approach around whether we go down a framework route or not, I'm kind of happy to take that back as to whether there's any, you know, kind of mechanism to deal with this almost in lots, which is the technical term, or whether we actually say, you know, we're willing to countenance that kind of framework arrangement. One of the things I would probably just say in terms of the risk associated with that is it does potentially put the cost up. So, you know, what we've got to do as a service is balance the value for money aspect against the, you know, the framework aspect. Frameworks do other things from a positive perspective. They give you a range of different providers to pull on. They give you potentially some protection if somebody goes bust, you know, we're talking about earlier, weren't we? But they do tend to end up costing you more because of a range of different suppliers on a framework and because of the nature of the supplies that come forward. So, I mean, in terms of where we are, I'm just trying to think what we do with the recommendations. I'm very happy if it's useful. I'm conscious we would be really great to move this forward. would be really great to move this forward, obviously before the next committee, which would be September. If, I'm, I'm, I'm really happy to kind of go away and maybe come back with a very brief update in terms of what we might do around that framework issue. And then if you're happy for me, on the basis of a discussion through knowledge briefing, potentially maybe relatively quickly, to then make the decision that we move this on, if, if that would be helpful.
I think that's probably going to be work was way forward. I mean, I think you've, you've clearly heard the points that we've made. I think that there's no, I'm not seeing any disagreement with people about those principles. So to the extent that they can be carried out, both by law and our existing procedures, then, yeah, if you can work on that and then feed us back with knowledge briefings, that would be useful, just looking around the room. Does that seem, so that we can actually make the decision today to approve the commission of the contract, so not delayed by a further committee decision. Councillor Baker?
As long as we can make, my concern is if we delay this decision, people, we delay people's new front doors, and we've had six and eight months delays for some people already, and some very vulnerable people that I've been aware of. So I wouldn't want to just make a decision that would delay that. I hear what you're saying, there are things built in our rules already that would cover us to a certain extent with locality. So as long as it doesn't impact on the decision to go forward to enhance people's properties as soon as possible, then absolutely, yeah, let's look at it.
Well, clearly Tom's indicated that if officers can do these things, then they'll do them. And if they can't do them, then there's no advantage to a delay anyway. So, yeah. Are people happy with that approach? So, yeah. So that takes us back to the, back to the text of the recommendation on page two oh one, which is to approve the commission of a contract for a period up to four years with a provider for supplying fit windows and doors to, to repair domestic properties with an estimated value of five point one five four million as set out in this report. Question, Paul?
Don't mean to be a stickler, Douglas, but, but will, will the wording, I appreciate the, the way forward, that if Tom can make something where that's preferable for us members and go the city of Sheffield. Will the wording of this actually, it does sound like it commits us to just going out and procuring a four and a half million pound contract?
It certainly does sound, are you stressing that we could say with, you know, one or more providers, so as to give the flexibility rather than a provider? Is that what we're saying? Or is that, is that just complicating things?
I, I think I, I would appreciate something like that, that implies.
Thank you, Chair. No, I, I, I think, I, I think obviously, I think that what the solution that Tom came up with is that obviously they've taken everything on board, but I think you do have to be very careful with procurements particularly. The legislation around it is, is quite convoluted, and we cannot be seen to be giving, sort of, you know, directing it into a specific area. We could, we just can't, it's, we, we're governed by it. So you've got those legal restraints, and I'm just, all I'm just concerned about is, is that, you know, it might be that it has to come back again for you to then make another decision. But I think men, I certainly, I know officers have taken on board what you said, but that would be my suggestion to you.
I mean, to be fair, I, I think that probably is the way forward. I mean, it's, you know, like you say, don't want to get bogged down in too much detail there. We actually want to get on with some doors and windows getting, getting done. So, and yeah, the officer taken on board the points that are well made, but yeah, I think they've got them, haven't they?
Sounds like an open and shut case to me.
Dave, yeah, that's right. Don't want to open the doors to any more of your jokes, Paul. Shall we move on? So are, are we taking that as, and ultimately agree that in the wording as set out on page two oh one? If so, yeah, great, thanks, yes. Open and shut case. Let's close the door on that one, move on to the, yeah, last one. So, yeah, the next, it is the final procurement. So, yeah, not much more to say. Over to you again, Tom.
Thank you, Chair. So this, this report effectively is, is looking again at two procurements. One is to commission a contract for up to two years with a provider for the delivery of disrepair work within our, within our social housing stock, estimated value of one point two million pounds. That disrepair work is very much focused on us getting on top of the claims that are currently in place, and getting on top of the work that currently needs to be done. Clearly, in delivering that one point two million pounds, we expect that that will ultimately push a saving out of the other end in terms of us being able to deal with disrepair in a more timely way going forwards. Spoke earlier on about the additional teams that have gone into the repair service. What those teams effectively do is gets to a place where we're able to deal with the demand that's coming through the doors. What this enables us to deal with is the, is the, 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 the historic stuff, the, the not the new stuff coming through the doors. So around about a thousand cases that are currently open on the, on the system will be dealt with through this contract, and that will get us back into a steady state position. And the additional resource we've got in service will enable us to stay steady going forwards and deal with what's coming through, while still obviously bearing down generally on our approaches to repairs and hopefully bearing down on the numbers of disrepair cases that are coming through, which are still clearly too high. So that's the disrepair aspect. The second bit is damp and mould. Members will be fully aware of the, the, the context for this really, in terms of Rochdale and what came through about that. There is, you know, not, we, what, what Rochdale has done has increased demand. I think it's probably fair to ask the question as to why we weren't seeing it before Rochdale frankly, and why it wasn't being reported. And I suspect that's potentially because our tenants were living in conditions that we wouldn't want them to be, but they weren't telling us often. What Rochdale has done, I think, really positively is start to flush that out. But the reality of that is that that has increased the demand in terms of this kind of work. So again, what we're looking to do is supplement our current service to get on top of some of this work, and again, get us back into a steady state position so that going forwards, we can stay on top of it effectively. So looking to go out to procurement contractors to support us over the next couple of years, to the tune of about one point two five million, to get us back on track in terms of that. So they're the two decisions.
Right, thanks very much. So questions on this one? Councillor Baker?
Thanks, Chair. Couple of questions really. One, are there the contractors out there to do this work with the expertise and in the quantity that we need? And two, really is a concern that we found that some of the cases that were reported, damp and mould actually were problems that tenants should have had advice on initially, and didn't, things like, somebody never opens their bathroom window, wonders why they've got mould on the ceiling, you know, and sees a little bit of mould and gets frightened and is, doesn't feel able to clean it. I've had one lady who has a cleaner in, and a cleaner took one and looked at this bit of black mould and, and left the flat, she was so frightened. We need some education out there. So it, those are the questions. So we're looking at education. How can we get the contractors to do this job? Thank you, Chair.
Thanks, Tom.
Thank you councillor Baker. So from what we currently understand with, there is a reasonably good contractor base in some of this work. Obviously, lots of demand across the system though, so there is, there is a risk, just given the level of demand that there is in the system across every council in the country. But we believe at the moment there are contracts out there to do the work, and we're working with a number of contracts actually even now, to help us with surveying work and some of the more technical work. So we, we do kind of expect some of those relationships to continue. I, I totally agree on the education point. It, it, it's a real, it's a real, the most challenging bit, I think, of, of what has come through from Rochdale is the absolute given, which is that we should not be blaming tenants for the conditions of their properties regardless of their own behaviour within that property and what they're doing. Because actually, the thing about education, the thing about financial support in some cases, in terms of people not being able to afford to put their heating on, you know, the thing, you know, the, the stuff that wraps around this, you know, how do you dry your clothes in a property that has no outside space, all that sort of stuff, you know? So you're absolutely right, that has to be part and parcel of the work as we go forward into this. And we're working very closely with housing colleagues through the damp and mould task force, and through the, the plant work we've got around damp and mould more broadly with housing and partners to look at all of that. And the other thing we'd always say in this, this regard, this is social housing. We know in the private housing sector we have a similar issue, and that education piece is probably even more important in that, in that sector.
Thanks very much, yeah. Pretty useful. Councillor Chaplin?
Thank you, Chair. And thank you Penny for raising that, that point, that about damp and mould. Our group certainly support this report, particularly in the hope that it will do, as you say, turn around the voids more quickly, so that we can get those, those homes back into, into use to deal with the housing crisis. Thank you.
Good, all right. If that's, oh, sorry, councillor Turpin.
Thanks. Yeah, I, I hadn't noticed from the report that you said it's for, for the thousand backlog cases, Tom, so that's kind of partly, I think I might know what you're saying. So you know what the problems are and the, and the causes of them. My question is really, is, is what solutions will be allowed within this contract? You know, there's, there's very different, you know, rising damp leaks, condensation from thermal bridges or ventilation, all, all might look the same if you live in that house, but they're all like completely different causes and solutions. So is this contract, and as we are in an election period, I'd say, is it not only going to be tough on damp and mould, but tough on the causes of damp and mould?
Very good, Paul. Tom?
Yeah, so I, I, I might ask Chris to come in in a second, but the, the intent is that this is very much about kind of supplementing the work that is required. There is still a kind of a, the identification of it, you know, before it is still with, with us and our surveying teams. And some of the technical resource that we still have within our, you know, that we commission as well actually, and because it is a technical area. What this does is give us the capacity actually to deliver the, the work in a property, so the building work that might be required, some aspects of potentially even just painting work gives us, gives us the capacity to do that. It will be very much, I think, like a general build contract to some extent, and we'll expect they'll be able to do a range of different interventions within our properties, from the simple painting bit, cleaning bit, as councillor Baker was saying, right through to things like damp proof courses and other things, and, and insulation and cold bridging of this.
Okay, thank you very much. Just one question here. I mean, on this one, I think we're, we're facing extra spending, so we're acknowledging there'll be a pressure on the housing revenue account over the course of the year. Is it fair to say though, Tom, that actually this, the work on dealing with the disrepair cases should actually lead to some savings in the sense of actually doing less litigation, doing, having to pay out less on court costs, so that you could describe as an investor save, even though it's probably quite difficult to quantify that?
I, I think that's absolutely right, Chair. I think our expectation is, is that if we can get ourselves into a position where we're just dealing with these complaints much more quickly, just that in and of itself will reduce the legal costs associated with, with disrepair cases. I mean, the committee will know this very well, but actually the costs that we incur around disrepair are, are mainly legal costs. The bit that the tenant actually gets from their claim is a very small proportion actually the overall cost to the council. So the more we can deal with this stuff quickly, the more we can expedite that legal process, the more money we save actually in terms of the system.
Yeah, thanks. I just want to flag that point, because I think we, for those who've been in the briefings sometime, think of last year, recall it was about the, the amount of money that went out to claims farmers, and actually pretty poor deal in many cases for any tenants who get drawn into these schemes. So, okay, well, if we can, yeah, get your houses fixed and in the long run, invest safe, that's a good thing. Councillor Norris?
Just a really quick follow-up to that. Is it going to be, I don't want to put shed loads of extra work, but is it going to be possible to collect any data that shows us what we've saved?
Whether we'll be able to do that directly through this work, you know, I'd say, are you linking this work to that, I'm not sure. But we're doing a huge amount of work to really closely monitor disrepair, both in terms of, you know, time from claim being received to, to dealt with and everything else. In fact, we had a very detailed discussion yesterday in one of our meetings to look at the data and to look at how we track and monitor some of this stuff. So the intent is to get much more closer monitor of the whole disrepair process going forward. And actually, you know, the trick of this disrepair stuff, to be honest, is to prevent it ever getting to claim, is to prevent it ever getting to the claim stage. And, and I'm, I think we're all hopeful that the damp and mould resource, the additional work we're doing, we talked about responsive repairs and other things earlier on, if we get the whole system working better, you simply won't get the stuff coming out of the other end. And that's the, that's the, that's the trick of this. But we are monitoring very specifically disrepair claims and cases very, very closely.
Thanks. I think it might be something we pick up in the performance monitoring when we come on to that. Are we okay going to the recommendations? Page two hundred and fourteen. So essentially, it's approving both, the commission of both those contracts and noting that it will cause a pressure on the HRA account. Well, that's something worth to deal with, but it's worth, worth doing. We have support for that? No disagreement? Yeah, okay. I think we can call that as a unanimous thing. And so thanks for that. That is the end of the agenda. We've actually got through quite a lot of stuff today that looked like it was rubber stamping, but actually hasn't been, and we've found that very useful. So thanks, a new committee, new staff. And we meet again in September, nineteenth of September for the next committee. But I guess in that time, there's quite a lot of briefings, a lot of work to be done behind the scenes to keep moving all this stuff on. So, yeah, thanks everyone for attending today. Let's leave it there. Cheers.